Good evening. If we could call this meeting to order. If we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you. I would just, for those of you here and for council and for those of in the gallery, have Crestwood, grade six, just grade six? Yes, class here tonight to observe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have adoption of the agenda.
Any additions? Okay, seeing none, we'll adopt it.
Next item is adoption of the minutes, item 3.1 on page four. You're five minutes from our last meeting on November 19th.
Any air submissions? Okay, seeing none.
Moving on now to our presentations. Our first presentation tonight's, item 4.1, page 206 in your packets. We have Malcolm Sissons joining us. He's Chair of the Heritage Resources Committee and is here to talk about the 1718 Inventory Project.
Welcome, Mr. Sissons. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clugston, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to present our Heritage Resources Inventory Report for 2017-2018. There we go, okay. This is the report as, or the committee as it's currently constituted, showing the public members. Sally Sein, Wayne Lust, Patrick O'Brien, myself, Jamie McIntosh, who's the council representative, and Earl Morris, who's the vice chair. In addition, we have had Randy Follett currently representing the city, is Lee Prestaco, and of course Karen Anne Shawanagrodzki, who makes everything on our committee happen. So, full appreciation to her for making this work. Just a brief summary of our activities in 2018. We have the ongoing municipal historic resource designation requests, currently dealing with Fifth Avenue Memorial, and I've had some inquiries from St. Barnabas. So, those will be upcoming. We completed the First Street South Municipal Historic Area Walking Tour. If you haven't done the tour, it's a great tour and very informative. Sally Sein does the tour and she knows it inside and out. She grew up on the street. We have been in consultation with parks regarding the Sama site and have provided input for that. We are currently doing a bi-monthly series of newspaper articles on various heritage topics that appears in the Medicine Hat News. Our committee oversees the Urt Duggan Garden, which is a nice heritage garden and hopefully has added value to the downtown. We have been working on a project regarding Saratoga Park, which, with the historical connotations of it, and conducted an open house and may bring forward a municipal historic area designation proposal to council. We've been conducting our Centennial Certificate Program, which is to acknowledge buildings that are at least 100 years old, commercial buildings. There are so many houses that we can't do all of the houses, but certainly the commercial buildings. We had the Civil Defense Siren Plaque unveiling ceremony earlier this year. I was unable to attend, but Earl Morris, our vice chair, conducted the ceremony and what we are presenting tonight, our historic inventory project. So, we evaluated 14 sites, four of which were actually previously in the inventory but had very summary forms of evaluation. So, we brought them up to the same level of detail as our other projects. We used Donald Luxton and Associates, who have been performing those consultations since the beginning, and just to make an acknowledgement that the Alberta Lottery Fund, the Alberta Historic Resources Foundation, and the City of Medicine Hat have helped us financially to conduct these, this research. And Luxton has worked closely with our committee and also with the archive staff. And we mentioned four previous sites. So, the consultants who prepared this presentation to some extent would note that they conducted two meetings with our committee. They conducted site visits to each of the sites. They performed archival research mainly at the Esplanade Archives. They conducted one open house in November of 2017 and prepared this final report. There are incentives for those sites that are on the registry, which is the, which are the designated resources. They're eligible for up to $50,000 worth of grant support from the Alberta Historic Resources Foundation. So, that's a nice incentive. Currently, there are no incentives from the city for owners of municipal historic resources. That is something that maybe we can talk about in the future, but currently that's provincial support is the main form of support. So, the key components of these evaluations are the statement of significance and the statement of integrity. So, the significance, obviously, why is this significant to the people of Medicine Hat? Integrity, how well-preserved is it? And these are standards that are used across the country and actually across the world. In addition to the bricks and mortar evaluation, there's also more of a values-based analysis, which is now quite common in heritage conservation. So, it's not just about the building, it's about the story that goes with the building. And I think the bricks and mortar are equally important, but there you go, that's me. And the sites are now graded, very simply, as either grade one, which is outstanding, or grade two, which is important but less outstanding. Go on into the actual report. The first, first one, which was a reevaluation, St. Patrick's Roman Catholic Church, built 1912-14. It's pure Gothic revival design. This is actually a national historic site in addition to its importance in the City of Medicine Hat. It's not currently a municipal designation, but it's on our registry. It was one of the very first poured concrete buildings in Canada, continuous pour. And the cement was actually manufactured just outside of Medicine Hat at Dauntless. So, it's significant for a couple of reasons. It's also been the center of the Roman Catholic community for many, many years. So, equally that St. Patrick's is well-known and a highly visible landmark in the city. This one is tucked away in a back alley and virtually unknown. It's quite an interesting building. We date it, or the consultants dated it based on square-cut nails, which puts it in the 1883-1887 timeframe. It appears from the logs that were used to construct it that is actually two buildings that were put together and may have once been part of the brewery, the Saskatchewan Brewery, which was in town, or possibly part of the CPR buildings, the early surveyor buildings. Anyway, it's a nice little building tucked away in the, just outside the municipal, First Street Municipal Historic Area. Central Park is a little different. It's not a building per se, although there is a gas house building on it that dates from 1913. This was developed by a developer who had the foresight to donate a large city block for his centerpiece development, and that was E.D. Bennett. And he laid out his lot so that the prime lots would face the park. The deal was that the city would actually develop the park. So, that didn't start until 1912. And as you can see, the original sapling sticks have now grown up and up and even, they are, it's a mature urban forest nowadays. And I believe that the, that some of those cottonwood trees are actually used for practice, for limbing and pruning. It's also the home of Moby Dick, which is a concrete whale, a unique design and part of the park. In 1947, it became the Kiwanis Central Park as the Kiwanis Club adopted it and has looked after it ever since then. Whoops, sorry. Imperial Bank Building Downtown, built 1911. This was a work of William T. Williams, whose name comes up over and over again in the city as the architect for the city hall, the original city hall, the Cypress Club, bank buildings, schools, and so on. He's a very important individual in the early years, pre-war years. He left town in 1915 to go to California. I think his source of commissions dried up during the war years. So, this is classical revival style. Its significance for its part in the Edwardian pre-war commercial boom period, when so many things were happening in the city. Another William T. Williams building, the Cypress Club. Notable, first of all, the club itself started in 1903 and was formed through an ordinance of the Northwest Territories Council, before Alberta became a province. Its significance today, in addition to being well-preserved, is that it is typical of an Edwardian-era men's club, still functioning for its original purpose. I think it's also significant to note that in 1910, there was a move afoot in the city to change the name of the city to Gasburg or Smithville because the heritage of the city was thought to be a little bit too flavorful. And the members of the Cypress Club wrote to Rudyard Kipling, who'd been through town in 1907, and as the minutes show, had had an uproariously good time in the Cypress Club after touring the various industries in town. You can interpret that however you want. But he was pleased to write back to the city, and it was published in the newspaper that he suggested that maybe a better name would be Judisville if the, if the citizens decided to change what was the historical name. The Lauder Residence, Bill Lauder was a Scots immigrant and a champion boxer. His house built 1913, Prairie Four-Square Style, missing its veranda and its upper deck. Otherwise in fairly good condition. And it's a good example of an early Riverside residence backed onto the river with originally a barn behind it. We have two Porter residences that we evaluated this year. So, this one was built in 1894, so one of the oldest buildings in town. As you can see, it's missing its veranda, but otherwise is a very simple rectangular style, built by Richard C. Porter. So, the Porter family came to Medicine Hat to build the railway bridge. They were involved with building the railway bridge. So, there was Sam Porter, his three sons, of which Dick was one. And they all settled here and went into various businesses, mainly known for ranching, of course. But Dick Porter ran the family freight business. And this is the Parker Residence, so built 1914. Architect William T. Williams, again, very good example of an arts and craft bungalow. Also part of the Riverside development, which took place after the opening of Finley Bridge. And Parker, William Parker was one of the first 300 Mounties that left Winnipeg and came west. And he later fought in the Boer War. And so, very interesting history and a very well-preserved house. So, this one's a little bit later, 1943, also on Riverside. This was built by, or built for Mac Higdon. And it's called a period revival style. It's very rare that a house was built during World War II. There was a very, real shortage of building materials and labor. Mac Higdon was an American, but settled here, associated with a number of different ranches. He also has a close association with the Medicine Hat Exhibition and Stampede, hence Higdon Hall. And in 1973, this building became the convent for the Ursuline Sisters, who were teaching at St. Teresa's. Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce, well, Canadian Bank of Commerce at this point, built 1908, so quite early for a bank building here, and operated as the Bank of Commerce until 1980, at which point the Chamber of Commerce moved in. It's in the classical revival style. This is a provincial historic resource in addition to its significance to our community. It's interesting, if you're in Inglewood in Calgary and walk along the street, there's almost an identical Bank of Commerce building there, which leads us to believe that they were somewhat copycat-type buildings, probably designed down east and using materials that were specified down east because the building features limestone rather than sandstone and architectural terracotta, which is very rare in Medicine Hat. I don't know of any other examples of that in Medicine Hat. And soft mud brick, which is a color, of a color tone that is not a local color tone. So, probably all the materials were imported for this building. Charlesworth Residence, built 1903, so another very early residence. It is considered to be in the Queen Anne Revival Style, which was a transitional period between Victorian architecture and Edwardian architecture. And so, our other example of that is the Crawford Dietrich Residence, which is also Queen Anne's style. Charlesworth was an early civil engineer and surveyor here, but he only stayed for a couple of years and then moved to Edmonton before later moving back to Southern Alberta into Brooks to manage the Eastern Irrigation District. But it's highly significant for the Niblock family that lived there for 70 years. So, Niblock was an early superintendent of the CPR, quite involved with building the hospital. And of course, the Niblock family was here for many, many years. Also, later became a photography studio, Gainesborough Gall, Gainesborough Studio. Corona Hotel, built 1912, architect William T. Williams. Classical revival, revival style. It's a historic railway hotel. So, the main means of getting across the country in those days was the train. And there were hotels generally close to the railway station. It was built during the boom period, and as soon as it was built, they put an addition on the east side, an opera house and theater, which you can just see in the old picture there. Similar arched entranceway to what we had on the Marnark Theater. It was later converted to a bowling alley. I guess a reflection of the times, less opera, more bowling. The hotel later was owned by George Cantolini. He was a famous local hotelier with the Ascina Boy Inn and other hotels. And for those of us of a certain age, we might remember the hockey team, the Cantolinis. The Flath Residence up on Crescent Heights. So, this was one of the speculative houses built by Edward Bennett of Central Park fame. So, he was developing upper-level houses, particularly in the arts and crafts style. So, this real estate developer was working on the Crescent Heights subdivision from about 1911 on. And he donated the land for St. Teresa's Academy. The later owners of the building were the Flath family, who operated Flath's Lodge out at Elkwater, a store and a dance hall. So, that'd be before Henry Allergas' time. But again, for those of us of a certain age, we might remember that. The Peard Residence, so Peard was a bricklayer, came from Ontario, but he actually set up a concrete products manufacturing operation down in the Seven Persons Creek Valley and made various types of molded concrete blocks, which you see around town typically in retaining walls. But the Jack Knowles Residence was built out of those blocks completely. So, Peard went off to war and with the Canadian Expeditionary Force. And then when he came back, he moved to Calgary. So, leaving this, this house, a four-square style, which was taken over by Robert Porter, so brother of Dick, son of Samuel. And this would be Bob's grandfather. So, in 1921, Robert Porter, in just inside the door and to the right, where the little living room was, was killed by a gas explosion. And so, Bob's dad, Emerson, had to come back from university and take over running of the ranch. And Bob actually stayed here often when he was in town going to school. So, to conclude, directions for the future. We have a great inventory of historic buildings here. They've been well-evaluated. I think there's some good tourist opportunities, walking tours. But we've been working with Jason Anderson to try and implement some of this information into his material. It's also important as part of community education and awareness of our community and its history. This information can serve to train heritage professionals, so architects, technologists, working on some of these buildings and trades. And I can say that certainly there's been quite a bit of masonry repointing done over the last 10 years. So, the masonry trades are getting a good experience in working on historical buildings. And we should continue to partner with these provinces on these programs. And how do we measure success? Well, increased conservation of these resources. Hopefully, they don't, are not destroyed or trampled on or otherwise disappear from our inventory. We want to make sure that there's an increase in community pride and knowledge of these buildings, which we're trying to do with open houses and our newspaper articles. We try and encourage citizenry to become engaged in heritage. And I think Second Street is a good example, and now on to Third Street with the opening of the latest brewery. Historic tours, we are trying to engage them, and we are getting good success with some of the tours. And I think it's important to maintain partnerships with the provincial government. They are a good partner for us. They provide funding through the Alberta Historic Resources Foundation that helps keep these buildings going. The heritage is being implemented by integration with the local planning documents. And our inventory, which is the list of evaluated buildings, and our registry, which is the list of registered designated buildings, continues to grow. So, this is also generating employment for local trades and professionals. There we go, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sissons. Any questions or comments, Counselor McIntosh?
Thanks, Your Worship. If I could make just a quick comment. I have sat on the HRC for just over a year now. And I can say this community is extremely well-served from the individuals involved. Mr. Sissons, your passion and commitment for preserving this community is second to none. Your right-hand man, Mr. Morris, and the rest of the committee, it is very evident how seriously they view their, their responsibility. And future generations of this city are going to benefit from being able to look back at the work that you've done. So, thank you very much as a board member.
Thank you. Counselor Dumanowski?
I'll echo those comments. I, I was saying to Mr. Sissons on the way down before council, how enamored I am by the, the work that that group does and also the articles. As you said, creating that public interest and collaboration with the Medicine Hat News, I think is just fascinating, and I always look forward to it. And it's a, it's a great night for the students of Crestwood, who came here and got to see some of those old pictures and, and maybe even make some notes about where those places were. And after the meeting or tomorrow, you'll have a chance to go and look at it and walk and touch it and kind of feel history alive. And I think that's really what it's about. And we have to plant those seeds in this generation. And we have to create interest in the current generation so that we can ensure the preservation of these wonderful buildings well into the future. So, congratulations, well done.
Thank you. Counselor Somrush?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The protection of local history, that's always very interesting. I know the first step is to make an inventory of all the things that are, that we have. Now, when it comes to protection, do you need the owner's permission to list it as a historical resource? Or is that something that we can do independently of them?
I think according to the Historic Resources Act of Alberta, if council felt a resource was in great danger and highly significant, I think you have the authority to actually designate over the, I guess, the objections of the owner. But it's, in, in practice, it's never done. We work with the owners, and if they are not interested in a designation, we encourage them to do their best to preserve their resource with their own resources and try and offer them technical help. We have never proposed a designation over the will of the owner.
Thank you.
Does that, does that answer your question, though? You were talking about putting it on the list, weren't you?
Yeah, I guess my, I mean, I know that it comes with certain obligations, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process there.
Okay. Counselor Friesen?
Well, it's been well said. First of all, that was a great presentation. I, it, it's just fascinating to see history come alive again in a, in another way. And, and the work of your committee is absolutely incredible. Pardon me, I just, it's been well said. I just wanted to point out that all communities have a history. I, what sets us apart in my mind is the work of you and your colleagues and your committee, where you're able to put such emphasis, make such, have such commitment and passion about, about honoring the history and the heritage that we have. I think it absolutely sets us apart, and every initiative you do speaks to that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And on behalf of the committee, I think it should be noted that everybody puts in a lot of work, a lot of hours go into that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you think you could have a motion for reception?
So moved.
Second.
If we could vote? It was unanimous. Thank you, thank you.
My next presentation tonight's, item 4.2. You'll pay, you'll find on page 68, item 6.5, for the background to this. We have Commissioner Lenz to start off our Energy and Utilities Division budgets.
Welcome, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council, staff, members of the gallery, and those that are looking on at home. Now, typically, I guess the budget officer for the federal government gets some new shoes. I decided I'd go out and get a haircut as I deliver this to you. So, it just would take us some time and walk you through what's been a long process, a process that started last fall and worked through all of this year to get to where we're at today, to seek your approval. Touchy. I'm gonna wave to change them for me. So, I had the privilege of standing before council back in June of 2017. We had just come through a pretty rough year, 2016, where the Utilities Division had suffered losses. And it wasn't a very, a rosy financial picture. And we came to you with a strategic plan of how to reorganize, reshape, and follow some vision and guiding principles. And we've reorganized the, the division and continue to do so. And we have, and with your support, we've believed that the strategic plan is working for us and has been valuable in providing the contributions to the city. So, we'll continue to provide safe, reliable, cost-effective services and most importantly, meet our safety and regulatory compliances. That's very, very important to us, for our people, for the safety of the public, and for our reputation as well. Our guiding principles, remember, was always sustainable. It has to be sustainable. We can't leave infrastructure fall apart or leave a boughway for the next generation. We want to be cost-effective and make sure that it supports the future direction that council wants for financially fit and also to attract investment to the city. But be balanced. We have to be pragmatic. It's always been a risk-based approach. Some things that we put in place, we Some things that we put in place, we take a risk. Others, we balance the risk versus the reward and may or may not do something. So we have to have that balanced approach on a go-forward basis. So our utility strat plan introduced in 2017 and continued on through 2018. Infrastructure still remains safe, reliable, robust, and well-positioned for the next generations. If we do our jobs today, we don't leave somebody with rate shocks later down the road. The organizational restructure and focus has really helped us. We've balanced out the portfolio more. We've done more of a market capture and also placed large contracts, which helps the utilities on its revenue generation and overall helps with levelized utility rate increases. Now, we're going to continue with the same staffing that we've had. We're not going to increase staff and we're going to absorb the current growth that we've got and existing growth over the next four years with the resources that we have. Following back up on the theme of 2017, maximize infrastructure and the resources we have to date before building on new. Continue to be cost-competitive. I just wanted, just a moment of that, is that nobody likes a rate increase, but we have to in order to sustain our infrastructure, what we've put in the ground and what we need to recover on a go-forward basis. But we are listening to our customers out there. And I had the opportunity last spring of listening to a young mother who was talking about, we were talking about financially fit and she said, you know, I'm doing the best I can to control my utilities and my costs and that. And although you guys say you're the lowest-cost provider, that's just being the least fat cat in a room of fat cats. So I took that on board and I took that to heart because every dollar counts for every family and every business. And so spending has to be under control. What we put into the future, that has to be in control so we're not seeing rate shocks going to our customers. Now, we want to continue on with refining the division. So we've just brought energy and utilities together. We think there's a benefit to that on a go-forward basis of maximizing a gain on the resources that we have in order to benefit the city of Medicine Hat. Go ahead, Kathy. Forward that. Okay. So I'm going to ask Brad Maines, our General Manager of Natural Gas and Petroleum Resources, to walk us through the energy portfolio. And then Rochelle Pankos, General Manager of Utilities Business Development Support, will talk to the utility side. I'll sum up for you where we're at as a joint organization.
Well, good evening. To say oil and gas and pipelines are in the news today probably be an understatement. So I thought I'd bring some along. This is really what all the kerfuffle is about. It's a vial of heavy oil from Ardensel Field. Now, it's in Saskatchewan, it's not in Alberta. We've been talking a lot about Alberta, but I made the mistake as I was coming down, it actually turned over a bit inside the car. And the problem with heavy oil is, this used to be clear, the top half of it, we'd probably have to wait about three days for it to settle back down. It's a viscosity thing. But when you hear this talk about extra heavy oil and differentials, this is the stuff that we're not getting very much money for. So I'm going to talk a bit about that tonight and some of our plans and where we're going So NGPR through the good times and the bad. Certainly, we're in a commodity-based business. Price fluctuations are normal course for this type, whether it's coal, whether it's wood, whether it's copper. It's been a history of ups and downs. And certainly for oil and gas, it's no different. But I think tonight, as we contemplate the NGPR budget and the current times we're in and what we see over the next few years, two, three, four years, I think we have to look back and realize just the benefits that this division has actually given to the city in those good times. We had a calculation, this dated from a presentation a few years back, but net attributes were $568 million into, into the city coffers. So, and that was not that long ago, 1999 to 2014. So very profitable division for a long period of time and through some very good years. But we're here to talk about the present. I have on the slide systemic prolonged collapse of Western Canada dry gas. I wish it was different. Technology, the use of fracking, multi-stage fracking, very extended-length laterals, really the shale revolution that has changed really particularly in North America, but is also changing global supply as well, has really had an impact in terms of Western Canada. Where we sit with just shallow dry gas, no liquids associated with it, our profitability is quite low compared to some of these new areas where in some cases, they can drill one well. We have over 2,200 sites, 2,200 producing sites. They can drill one well and the, or one pad with six wells in, and the productivity from that pad equals all the gas coming out of our 2,200 wells. So that is where our business has gone. We can thank technology for that. We'll likely have cheap gas. I would not like to say forever because I don't like to say forever, but certainly for the foreseeable future, we expect that gas, particularly in Western Canada, is going to be constrained. Certainly, we've read a lot and heard a lot about the LNG discussion coming off the west coast of B.C., possibly at some point in time in the future. That will have an impact on the Western Canadian gas market. But as pertains to Eastern Alberta, we don't see that. We actually see in the intervening time, more of that stranded gas being redirected down into the eastern side of the province. It's all stacking up at Empress, right on the, on the border, and really has, has no worse to go. Currently, Western Canadian heavy oil is very, very depressed, particularly over the last month. There was one week, and it wasn't that long ago, we actually were receiving, for that vial there, we were receiving $4 for the entire barrel. That was our overall revenue. That barrel itself to find and produce is about $25 to $27. So they're in the angst in the heavy oil world today at these differentials. Not only does new expiration not make sense, but current production does not make sense. So we saw the announcement from the Alberta government yesterday, an effort to try and bolster those differentials to try and affect the pricing. I don't want to get into, we don't have enough time to talk about thoughts on, on that particular initiative, but just give you some perspective. Why is the heavy oil so low right now and where do we actually expect it to go? The heavy oil that we produce here in Alberta mostly makes its way through various means down to the Gulf Coast where it's put through refineries down there and refined into, into a higher-value product. That oil is currently getting stacked up again at Hardesty, which is a different storage place for it, but again, close to the eastern border. It's a combination of two things. When we get into the fall period, after we come out of summer, a lot of this heavy oil actually is used in construction and paving. And after the summer season is over, demand naturally drops. In addition, we've had a tremendous amount of new heavy oil come on in Western Canada. And when you hear, well, we need tank cars and then we need places and pipelines for this to go, it's really to soak up and all this new production that's coming on. And thirdly, this is a seasonal time for those refineries generally in Louisiana. Because of the decreased demand, they go into their maintenance and turnaround. So this is historically a slow pricing season, September, October, November, but we have never seen prices quite this low. These are, these are dramatic. They will improve. Certainly, the initiative yesterday from the provincial government, restriction of supply will start to eat away at the storage, but that storage number is very high. I think the number was 35 million barrels is sitting at Hardesty waiting, waiting to be shipped. Unfortunately for us here in the city, we're primarily a heavy oil producer, but we do see a more robust future for that. And you'll see that Commissioner Lenz will show that in his, in his wrap-up here as we move forward. In terms of some other business within NGPR that will affect the budget as well, of course, and again, very topical and in the news quite a bit, abandonment and reclamation. Large spread in the Globe and Mail recently on that topic and a lot of concern around that. The city prides itself on our abandonment and reclamation initiatives. We have no intention of leaving a mess. Very few people actually do in this business. Economics sometimes get in the way, but nobody goes into this business to leave a mess. And certainly, the city is not in that business either. So we are very active on abandonment and reclamation. In some areas, we've been lauded by the provincial government for setting the standard for how this is done. So you'll, and in your package, you will see spend on abandonment and reclamation that equates to approximately, close to almost 10% of our overall NGPR budget. We believe that eventually that will be a number that many others in the province will be asked to look towards that particular number. And to conclude this, this opening slide, I think we also have to remember, as a utilities group, we also have electricity. So good times and the bad, certainly when we have very low gas prices, that is the fuel gas that goes into that electricity generation that generates those large profits. So we don't, it's very rare that we have both in, in, in good times and we're certainly seeing that today. So in NPR, NGPR in 2019, will continue to actively reclaim our abandoned work sites. We currently have 800 sites that were in some stages of reclamation. We have a staff of three that work on those 800 sites and they use consultants to bolster that. Again, very heavy focus on it. We abandoned a field in Saskatchewan in 2018 in Richmount. We're currently looking at our fields in terms of our profitability to see where we go next in terms of, in terms of that abandonment. We are constantly searching for technological solutions. During 2019, we expect that we're going to trial a new way of abandoning problematic wells. Again, we would look to ourselves as an industry leader in, in this case. So we're only one of several companies that are, are looking at this technology. But we believe that if it's successful, it could have a material impact on the legacy, that financial legacy that we have to deal with here in the future going forward. We also look just in terms of our reclamation as well. A few years ago, NGPR started using a different technique when we were actually removing the surface infrastructure from the well site. We saw significant cost savings associated with that. And it's now becoming industry standard when it comes to the actual removal of those surface facilities. It also makes for a speedier reclamation. Urban well management, for those who were at the Viner Center, the reopening of the Viner Center and have maybe been by some of our other sites, you may have noticed there's a cedar fence right behind the sign. There is, there's a gas well there and it's, it's a very old gas well and it had been leaking gas for a long period of time. We have been managing that well for many decades. We've been watching its behavior. We've been trying to come up with solutions. And what you see there today, we would consider to be state-of-the-art mitigation for fugitive methane. The way it is set up, it's drawing methane from a long ways away and successfully venting it out of the roof. And in 2019, we're actually going to look at new technology that will actually improve that venting so we don't actually even have to do that. So we consider that to be a fine example of urban well management. We sit over a large gas field. We have a lot of gas wells here in the city. So it's a very important part of what NGPR does. The growth strategy. I've been here before talking about the growth strategy a few years ago. We are a long ways through it. We're now entering into the second stage of drilling. We'll spud our next well on Wednesday in the Hayes area. We'll have two wells, a second well in Alderson before year end. And then come first quarter of 2019, we'll be drilling six more wells, generally to the west of the city in the general Alderson through to Gleishen area. Following with the parameters that I set out for the growth strategy, high risk, high reward. We're targeting pools that will deliver a minimum $15 million to $30 million if successful. However, when we look back at the first stage of the growth strategy, this is not easy. And again, if it was easy, there would be lots of people doing it and would be out there. So we're taking all the learnings from that first stage of drilling and we're applying them here to the second stage. I can say, given the amount of work that we have put into this growth strategy over the last two, two and a half years, we're probably looking at the pivotal moment in terms of that growth strategy. If, and hopefully they will, some of these eight wells coming up work, I think that will give us a different view on where we're going from here. But if we're not successful in these next eight wells, I think it'll be time to have a discussion about where we actually go with, with our growth strategy. In terms of, to go back to the first slide and first opening bullet where we talk about that from a financial perspective of what we do in, in the commodities game, we do hedge in NGPR. We, it's very rare in these days that we actually meet our hurdles for hedging. But where, we believe it is a strong financial instrument that helps to cushion some of the impact of these very low prices for oil and gas. It's certainly not a wager. It's not a way to bet on oil and gas prices. It's a way to make sure that we cover some of our base spending in case of precipitous revenue declines like we're currently seeing today. So going forward, there's no question, NGPR needs to evolve to reflect the new economic order as it comes to oil and gas. 19, early 80s, when I first started working in this business, we actually had to ask the federal government for permission to export natural gas. There was a concern that there would not be enough natural gas for everyone. So you actually had to go to the government and say, we want to export it. Oil, oil was back down to $6 in 1986 and it's not that far away from it, at least in the heavy oil side today. And that's a long time afterwards. So, but in all those downturns that we've seen, whether it was 86, whether it was 89 into the late 89, late 90s, what was interesting about those particular changes was we rebounded. Sometimes it was as short as a year. Sometimes it was two years. Certainly, the 86, the NEP, and then the 86 price crash took quite a while to recover from. But we don't see that here today. As I said earlier, with the natural gas surplus that we see in Western Canada, there is enough gas in natural, sorry, enough gas in North America to last hundreds of years. So we have to adopt to that reality and understand that that $500 or $600 million that we saw before, that might be a little bit hard to duplicate in, in this particular environment. We're hopeful. We're optimists. That's why we're in this business. We believe in the future. But there are a lot of headwinds currently facing not only NGPR, but this business as a whole. In terms of that, we will see a series of step changes through 2019. I didn't want to bring them all forth here. This is tonight about a budget, a presentation and hopefully an approval. But we do have a plan. And we have a plan, how we can evolve NGPR and what that will look like. Be a series of initiatives that hopefully will be successful on, on bringing a business case forward for your consideration. We are not comfortable with the numbers that you will see later from Commissioner Lenz. We don't believe that those are acceptable. Unfortunately, they reflect reality, but they're, they're not numbers that anyone wants to see on a balance sheet. So we will evolve and we will also continue to be the gas city. Yeah. So with that, I'll change, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Would you like to take questions now or?
I think maybe we'll wait till the end. Is that okay? Yeah.
Sorry, there's one bullet that was missing from that slide and I don't know where, how it got dropped off. But I did want to explain a bit because I know one of the natural questions that comes up was what happened to NGPR? Like we were profitable three, four years ago. Prices weren't that great. So what happened today? In 2001, the city actually entered into a long-term fixed-price contract with a major industrial client that was coming into the city. We enjoyed a fixed price for our gas for those 15 years. Some years, we didn't make money on that because the price of gas was quite a bit higher than what the fixed price was. But for many years in that 15-year contract, we enjoyed that revenue. That number was $25 million on average. So this, this division in 2017 started to have to deal with a $25 million revenue hit. On a, on a, on a division that will have revenues expected this year between $52 and $53 million, that's 50% of our revenue gone with the expiry of that particular contract. So I just wanted to just get that last statement in before handing it over to General Manager Pankos.
You will take questions at the end. I'm actually just going to take a little pause here. Crestwood has a bus coming and this seems like a good place to take a break. Is that all right? I'm looking at the teacher. Yeah. So we'll just take just a two-minute recess so they can shuffle out.
I think they were, they were so enthralled.
Well, that went well. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. So on the utility side of the division, we really are built on a primarily long-life assets driven by pipes, poles and wires, so quite different than the fluid side of the business. So our focus, being an operations division, really is on operational excellence. And sorry, I will make sure this is shifted. Meaning continuous improvement on cost controls as well as focusing on reliability. So there's a natural tension there that we look to balance. As Commissioner Lenz noted, safety and regulatory compliance. And that really is grouped together because they're both considered must-haves for our teams. With respect to long-term asset management, that's where we require significant discipline. Our assets typically span generations. So what we decide today often and typically impacts long-term. So we need to make sure that we're looking for full asset optimization over multiple years and not taking short-term shortcuts. And of course, we're keeping an eye on growth and revenue generation. And there, as Commissioner Lenz noted, we're, and consistent with our strategic principles, we're focusing on leveraging our existing assets, but making sure that we're doing it in a way that we it in a way that we can accommodate, attract, and retain new customers. Listed here are some new and ongoing challenges and opportunities that the utilities team will face. I'll just speak to one as an example, and that's the capacity market. So the province is in the midst of redesigning the electricity market that Genco sells its excess energy into. Our team is positioning to make sure that we are in a good spot to mitigate the risks that we may face, both for Genco as well as for our ratepayers, while also keeping optionality open for Genco. We have and will continue to be at the table as the rules evolve and as they're implemented to make sure that our voice is heard. Now, before we touch on the proposed rates, we thought it would be helpful to revisit the basis for how we adjust rates. Now, of course, here when we reference rates, we're really referring to our rate-based utilities focusing on distribution and environmental utilities. Now, when we look at rates themselves, it really is driven by a cost numerator and a volume denominator. So with respect to the cost side, we do follow regulated rate design principles. And what that means is recovery of our operational maintenance and administration costs, depreciation as a proxy for our capital spend through time, which gives us the return of capital and then return on capital that we use weighted average cost of capital as a proxy for that return metric. So in our case, the capital spend typically drives our rates and rate increases. And our focus within the utility side has been on capital investment to address aging infrastructure. And as I mentioned, it really is about that long-life asset and making sure that we're in good shape there. The final piece is the volume. So we look to attract as many customers for our existing assets as we can because as we have more customers, that increases your denominator and it has a chance to reduce your rates or at least reduce the increase in your rates from spending on that infrastructure. Now, we do review our rates on an annual basis and in twenty nineteen, we will continue to look at that, both from a rate allocation and methodology perspective. But here is how we've typically done it in the past and how it's represented for twenty Now shown here is electric distribution rates by customer class and as a rate change as proposed for twenty nineteen. This is the rate change per month. It is, however, indicative because the actual rates will vary by the volumes that are consumed by the typical customer. We've made some assumptions on what an average would look like in this case. It's also important to note that the rates exclude the commodity value. So this piece really is the infrastructure and cost to deliver the commodity to the customer. Typically in Alberta, the commodity piece that would be added onto this, for instance, for the residential customer, is the average of the regulated rate option that we see in the province. With respect to gas distribution monthly rates, again, this is by customer class. And again, it's indicative based on rate classes and the consumption level that we've assumed. And again, these rates exclude the commodity value, which would be additive. And the commodity value would be based on an average of the north and south regulated rates represented by Direct Energy and by AltaGas. And here you can see the environmental utility rate impacts on an estimated basis based on assumed volumes for each of water, sewer, solid waste, landfill, and waste diversion. And again, by customer class for each of those services. Now, the next slide really takes us to a comparison of what our proposed rates look like compared to some of our benchmark municipalities. And here you can see a low comparator, a high comparator, where we positioned against those twenty eighteen comparators and how our proposed rates are changing between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And this is for an average residential customer. So here you can see that the total for twenty eighteen had been a hundred and eighty-seven twenty-seven per month. That remaining lower than the comparable twenty eighteen rates, both in terms of the load number and of course, the spectrum. You can see the high there as well. Twenty nineteen rate that we have proposed remains lower than the twenty eighteen rate of the other jurisdictions. We don't yet have the updated twenty nineteen rate for those areas, but we're relatively confident that we will continue to remain the lowest of those jurisdictions. We've also listed here the MCAP impact that we've proposed to introduce consistent with financially fit initiatives and prior year at zero, and the impact would be two dollars and thirty cents per monthly bill. And again, these rates exclude the gas and electricity component. With respect to landfill and collection comparisons, our average chipping fee that we're showing here as a proposed rate is a five-dollar increase from prior year at eighty dollars per ton, which positions us, again, those rates shown in the other jurisdictions are for twenty eighteen. So it positions us well to remain competitive amongst the other jurisdictions. And with that, I will turn it back to Commissioner Lenz.
Thank you, GM Penkos. I'm not good at this, so I get, wave to Kathy back there. She does it for me. So just to give a snapshot and bring it all together. So we are one division now. We're not NGPR and we're not utilities. We are the Energy and Utilities Division. This is a summation of where our capital spend will be over the course of the next four years. Some of this is unavoidable. Some of this is by regulation. Some of this is by what we have to do to stay in this business. Other of it is very well calculated out based on our asset management plans and what we feel we need to put into the infrastructure to maintain it on a steady go-forward basis without any shocks or surprises to folks. So you'll see that the total overall capital goes up and down over the years. That is based upon the asset management plans and what's required, various cycles of machinery and equipment and when they need addressing. The biggest of the chunk of this is environmental utilities, which is our water and sewer. And a large chunk of that includes this twenty-six million dollar water residuals handling facility, which is something that is mandated through to us in order to get an environmental approval. We are working to extend that approval currently and are working with various levels of government for funding sources for that. So the capital will be funded by both operational proceeds and by debt. The net income out of snapshot. So as you can see here, a net positive income for the whole division across all four years. Now, as Brad said, we're not very pleased with showing that much red ink on NGPR. We are addressing it and we hope to be able to turn that tide. And if we do turn that tide, you can see that there would be significant upside for the city on a go-forward basis for the next four years. These are all based on our best professional evaluations based on information we get from industry, other insights, and other places where we looked for information, plus our own internal intelligence to ascertain if this is doable or not. And so the dividend to the city, as we said, going back to twenty sixteen when we lost three million and in last year, we projected this year to do ten. When we did the budget update last December, we're on track to provide from the utilities division, thirty-nine point one million in the dividend. And we looked at twenty nineteen and beyond, we're looking at significant dividends with maybe a tail-off in the twenty twenty-two. That is a combination of where we think we sit in the capacity market, plus we have some expenses through our maintenance programs that have to come to fruition at that time. So if I can leave you with this, that we all will continue to, the Medicine Hat advantage. We always will continue to analyze our assets. We will refine our budgets within year. We will always look for optimizations and efficiencies. Slow and steady revenue growth, mitigation of our losses. Long-term fiscal sustainability, residents should still concede comparatively low rates and will manage those assets in a sustainable manner. We certainly don't want to end up with rate shocks later on or having not looked after the infrastructure that was placed in our care. And predictable cost recovery, as you can see from our regulated rate utilities, we have a very even, well-balanced go-forward plan where we're not seeing high ups and downs and spikes and valleys. Infrastructure is key to managing a robust utilities in order to lessen utility rate shocks in the future. So our recommendation tonight is for council to approve the operating and tangible capital budgets across the division and to approve first reading for the rate bylaws this evening. That ends our presentation and we're open for questions. And as you can see, I have my team up in behind me here. I told them they couldn't leave with the bus, that they had to sit here and face the heat with me, so.
Thank you, Counselor Hirsch.
I was looking to jump on the bus too, but here we are. So two observations and then just a question. But so I want to thank you, Commissioner Lenz, for a great presentation. Very illustrative in terms of some of the challenges we're running into, but some of the celebrations that we should be doing as well, so very balanced. I'm actually very ecstatic that it is a combination of both. I spoke at the last audit about the net contribution, and I think is very important because I think sometimes we can get caught up in some of the notional stuff that's in there. NGPR strategies is notwithstanding. We still show a little bit, not a little bit, we show losses on that. But again, on a go-forward basis, we've got a plan. So having said that, and maybe you want to take the question or GM Mainz is fine. What do you say to the, to even maybe this Medicine Hat taxpayer that says, you know, what if we're losing money as it is? Why aren't we just shutting it in? You know, with that sort of mentality, why are we losing and what's the strategy? Why would we be doing that? And I think it's important. I think we are kind of, we've been briefed on that, but I just would like to have that explanation a little bit because I think it does have a good conversation.
So first, through the chair of Counselor Hirsch, first and foremost is what we try to avoid is reaction. That, that's the worst thing we can do. React short-term. So what we have to do is we think long-term. If you saw what we put up there, five hundred sixty-eight million over a fourteen-year period is very significant. So to have a thirty-three million dollar shortfall in one year without, it's like throwing the baby out with the bathwater. We really have to be pragmatic about this. We can't take a short-term reaction. And that's why it's so valuable we've got the two divisions together now. So look at the synergies of how we can optimize and maximize on that. And that's why we say we'll give you a thoughtful plan on a go-forward basis, but it will be thoughtful. It will not be reactionary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turnbull.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the sheet of key messages here. And I, I don't know if you have that sheet in front of you. You'd like to read it out yourself, but I find this extraordinary when, when my neighbors and friends will say, wow, man, they're ripping up another street. They've got more pipes going in there and they doing all this work and we're spending all this money. Why, why are they doing all that? So in these key messages, did you want to read those yourself? No? Okay. Well, I will. So environmental utilities, this is sewer and water. Eleven thousand two hundred and seven meters of pipe replaced. Fifteen point nine million cubic meters of water are treated. Thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-five tons of solid waste are collected. Four hundred and twenty-nine kilometers, four hundred and twenty-nine kilometers of water lines and seventy-four thousand meters of our existing pipes, which represents eighteen percent of all the pipes to ground, are over eighty years old. So they have to be replaced before we have major outages of water and backup of sewers. So I think it's important when we talk about the utilities and the cost recovery, this is where the money goes. We have to, we have to, we have to fix this stuff. Utility distribution system, so this is electricity and gas. I find these fascinating. We have, we replaced just the last year or so, a hundred and sixty-nine of nineteen thousand power poles, of which a lot of them are over forty years old and that windstorm that we had brought a lot of them down. And, and so I think that's it. One thousand one hundred and ninety-five kilometers of electrical lines in our city. That's our distribution. That's how you get your power. One thousand one hundred and eighty kilometers of gas line. Six point five kilometer of gas mains replaced. Think about six kilometers. That is a long way. I can't even walk six kilometers. So I can't even imagine that. But anyways, that was a bad joke, but anyways. Seven thousand four hundred, seven thousand seven hundred and forty-six gas lines services were surveyed for leaks. So we can't just wait for them to leak. So the utilities has a way of going into the pipes and having a look and see what's going on here. And so again, this is maintenance. It costs money to do it, but it has to be done. Three hundred and thirty-five new electrical services were installed and a hundred and twenty-one new gas services were installed. Here's an interesting one. Genco produced seven hundred and thirty-six thousand megawatts of power. We have a capacity of two hundred and fifty-five megawatts per day, correct? Per day. Natural gas, petroleum resources, as Mr. Mainz has pointed out, is twenty-six hundred wells owned and operated by our city. So it's always easy, including for us. You know, we run for election and we think we know all the answers until you get in and get all the facts and boy, it's an eye-opener. And so I just wanted to, to bring this other fact to everybody, including council. The market rate for natural gas today is sixty-eight cents a kilojoule. I was on council back in twenty-ten when we were paying as consumers ten dollars a kilojoule. That's what we paid for. So were we making money? Absolutely. At sixty-eight cents, maybe, Mr. Mainz, you could tell us how much it costs or Commissioner Lenz, how much it costs to produce a kilojoule of gas?
Well, I won't give away our competitive advantages, but let me tell you this.
It's a lot higher than sixty-eight cents. Factor four. Okay. So that's why, and I think, I really think it's a great point that you made to Counselor Hirsch is that we can't just walk away. Number one, we've got leases, right? We have to pay those leases. Takes, it takes from five to seven years for us to get, what's the word I'm looking for, for a reclamation and abandonment. So you have to get a license from the government up at that point. So you have all that. And so you're still paying all those lease payments to those farmers on their land until such time to get that back. So from my point of view, I think you're right. It's been a great resource for us and I'm sure that with the crew that you have put together, sir, terrific management group, and I am very confident that we will find means and ways to make a lot better outlook in the years coming. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Counselor Turner?
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, Counselor Turnbull pretty much covered everything. But I do want to say I've been a part of the Energy and Utilities Committee for the past year and it's been a real pleasure working with the outstanding management team you have. Their dedication and, and commitment to their job has just been outstanding and the results show that. And it's really interesting, we had Mr. Sizens here talking about these hundred-year-old buildings. Well, you know, when those buildings were put up, we were putting utilities in the ground. And some of them are still there. So that is, that is a fairly big thing we have to look after. And we are, we have a program to do that and I'm quite sure that we will copies that over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Varga?
I too echo that with the great presentation, the great people that we've got in the utility division. There's one slide I'd love you to go back to where it shows the different rates of the different cities. Because people in Medicine Hat always say to us that we've lost our advantage, right? So I'd just love it to go back where you show Lethbridge and Red Deer. And, and some of the, some of the costs we aren't low in, but in some of them we are and most of them we are. But I guess it might be like comparing apples to oranges. Obviously, their utility division has worked different than what we are. But like the difference from twenty-five dollars to forty-five dollars by Edmonton and only thirteen by Calgary. I guess I just want an explanation as to why there's that variance or how it's treated different for the cost of that utility.
Well, some of those, through the chair, to Council Varga, some of those others will have addressed that through their tax side versus the utility side, so that's why you can see a such a huge differential, because they're picked up through the taxes versus the utility rate.
Because, I mean, some of these information is seen by our residents within our community and say, "Well, we're not as cheap as what Calgary is," right? But there is a lot of parameters as to why they get to that level, right?
That's correct, and I think when you look at the overall side of tax and utilities together here, you see the benefits of the City of Medicine Hat, all in one. I will say that, you know, we try to do the rate comparisons as best we can, and sometimes we align, sometimes we don't, but overall, we track this, we look at it constantly, and as GM Pankow said, is that we always look at our rates, and whether we should be coming back to council with a variation to plan or not, and we will be doing so as we go forward, because we can't sit on our laurels, as I said before. We have to be able to adapt, and we have to be able to move with the times and the markets.
I guess the only reason I brought this up is because the bottom line is still under the red, where we're circled in red, and we're still the lowest in the province in a lot of areas, and most areas within our province, so when people come to us and say we don't have a Medicine Hat advantage anymore, we can prove it by what you just presented to us, so, thank you for that.
Exactly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, if I could get a motion for reception.
So moved.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving along now to the first of our public hearings, item 5.1, page 8, you'll find bylaw 4496, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 4157, the off-site levy bylaw. The advertising was done for this, I received no submissions.
Your Worship, I said bylaw 4496 be read a second time.
I'll second that.
If we could have a public hearing on this, I'd ask once, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this, please come down and state your name. I will ask a second time, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against, please come down and state your name. And I will ask a third and final time, if anyone would like to come down, please come down, state your name. Okay, seeing Ms. McKenzie, go ahead, you have the floor.
Hello. Thank you, Sarah McKenzie, President of the Medicine Hat and District Chamber of Commerce, thank you for the opportunity. Lisa wishes she could be here, but however, she is in Ottawa, representing us at the Canadian Chambers, and working on some cool stuff, so instead, I am here in her place, and what I was wanting to note is, while the bylaw is perhaps not the perfect model, we understand that this bylaw is just being brought forward as a simple rate update. We hope that the off-site levy municipal assist will continue to be in place until such time that the off-site levy bylaw can be reopened, reviewed, and evaluated in terms of the best options and possibilities moving forward. We would like to, we anticipate a full review of the off-site levy bylaw could be done following the adoption of the NDP, at which time we can have a more robust conversation on the model, the nodes and the projects, and the costs associated with the bylaw.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Mr. Ruff, did you want to say anything?
Mayor Clugston and fellow councillors, I guess I'm just going to ditto what the chamber just said. We spent a lot of time going through this with DNI, and also with Kent Snyder and his team, and Kent did a very good job on this, by the way. We are hoping that you will follow that model and extend it to 219 to 220, when the actual bylaw comes up for review and open in that time to determine what's going to happen after that date. We at CHBA are quite concerned, every time there is a situation where there may be an off-site levy cutback, it's all transferred into the lots, which, at the end of the day, when they're bought, are transferred to the builders, and then are transferred to the house. I know that there has to be something at the end of the 220, that has to be favorable to everybody, to the city and the builders, and we're hoping at that time, once the municipal development plan, and even the inter-ministerial development plan is reviewed, and all the other items that have to be approved in that timeframe are all put together, and come up with an accountable and a great off-site levy bylaw that'll go into the future for Medicine Hat and into the building industry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ruff. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comments. I think it's quite apparent, I was not in favor of off-site levy subsidies, and would have voted against it, but speaking with my fellow councillors, have twisted my arm and showed me the light, and I do think that you're absolutely right. We should maintain the subsidies as is until this bylaw runs out, and then we need to review it, because I think one of the administrators of our city said to me one time, "Phil, these bylaws are not carved in stone, and so we have to constantly be updating them, reviewing them based on market conditions, the economy, population growth, or lack of population growth." So, I think you're right, and we will certainly, I will be happy to be, or hopefully, part of that review situation. Thank you.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. Our economy isn't growing in leaps and bounds right now, and we have to be very careful what we provide for the builders and for the developers, and any time we can get work together with the city and the development industry, it's a win-win for everybody.
Counsel, I'm just going to just make a just statement that we are dealing with the off-site rate bylaw, we're not dealing with the assist, that does come up later, but it's okay, I don't mind you guys coming up. I just want to make sure that maybe the questions are perhaps somewhat directed to the rate bylaw. Go ahead, Council Varga?
Just a comment to both the chamber and to you, Mr. Ruff, is you're in constant communication with our planners and where we're moving into the future, and you have been for many years, I know that. So, I'm hoping that somewhere we can become to some balance, or where we're going to go for the future, you guys see what the market's going to be like in the future, so it'd be great if we work out something that's going to be best for everybody within Medicine Hat, that it's going to work on both sides, right? I think that's our end goal, I really do, so...
They're easy and very well to work with.
Okay, so, thank you for...
Good. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions on second reading? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote. That was unanimous, thank you.
Your Worship, I said bylaw 4496 be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Third reading? Seeing none, we'll vote. And that was unanimous, thank you.
Our next item for public hearings, item 5.2, page 18, bylaw 4504, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to close roads in the City of Medicine Hat, and this is for the 12th Street Southeast and Kingsway property.
Your Worship, I said bylaw 4504 be read a second time.
Second.
If we could ask if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. I'll ask a second time, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against this bylaw, please come down and state your name. And a third and final time, if anybody would like to come down and speak for or against, please come down and state your name. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and any questions or comments on second reading? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Your Worship, this time I said bylaw 4504 be read a third time and passed.
Second that.
Comments, questions? Okay, we'll call the question. That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving along now to our reports section of our meeting, first report's item 6.1, page 21, Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting November 21st, and this report's for adoption.
I move that report for adoption.
Second.
Any comments, questions? So, this is where if anybody wants to make any statements on the assist. Go ahead, Council Samraj.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, I think they're probably best directed to CEO. I understand that this proposal is just to bridge us until we have the NDP in place, so we can talk about this a little bit more in depth. I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about how this incentive program has changed. So, the first two years was a universal assist for all types of development, that changed two years ago. Is that an indication that all types of growth did not benefit the city equally, in the fact of what we get a return on that? Is that a fair description of that?
Through the chair, Council Samraj, a complex question. First of all, the process of reviewing this in concert with the municipal development plan, as you've pointed out, is really to get at, first of all, what we would like to incent as a community, what the community needs us to incent in order to encourage that to occur. Once having ascertained that through that process, this may be the type of incentive program that would prevail going forward, or it may be replaced by something else. Certainly, as you've pointed out, when you see disproportionate incentive being placed on infill, for example, versus greenfield development, it is because, or it ought to be reflecting, the fact that council is trying to encourage one thing or another to occur in the community.
Right, so, right, and so, what was presented at open committee at DNI, but is not here, is some of the differences that we get per hectare of the different types of developments there. But the question that occurred to me is, and it was, you know, it was a fairly large difference between greenfield residential or greenfield business compared to infill commercial, for example, on the other end. There's a very wide distance between those two numbers there, and for me, that strikes me as odd, because, I mean, in simplest terms, developers develop the land according to city standards, and they turn it over to us for maintenance and replacement. We do that through the taxes that we collect on those properties. So, I mean, it is kind of a cost recovery thing, but when I see such differences in the return on investment for different types of development, it makes me wonder, we're either providing less services to some of those developments, or we're charging more in taxes to some of those developments. I think the multifamily tax rate maybe is a good example here, so a condo pays 20% more than a single-family house if they are assessed the same value. So, of course, the return on investment on a condominium is going to be higher, it seems to me that there's an imbalance at the tax structure that's leading to kind of some of these distortions along the way. Is that a fair summary of this?
Through the chair, and I will invite any of my colleagues to join in this discussion, because it is a meaty discussion for the community. I think the straightforward alignment of taxation with services to the curb, or services to the individual residents, is perhaps misleading. When we look at the recovery of municipal costs through taxation, it's done using, in Alberta, a market-based assessment system that sets the value and then applies a mill rate against the value of the property in order to collect. It's not necessarily at a perfect alignment between the costs that the individuals living in a residence, for example, may be placing on the municipality, and the recovery that would occur through the subsequent taxation. The municipal development plan, again, is an area in which, or a tool through which we can get at, looking at on a comprehensive basis, what types of development we want to encourage, why we want to encourage it, whether or not it's efficiency, for example, or whether it's a quantum of consumption that we want to encourage. But multifamily, for example, that same piece of land that would have multifamily residents on it, would presumably occupy much more population, or a higher number of people, who would then make a higher use of public libraries, art galleries, recreation facilities, and parks. So, it isn't intended that the taxation aligns perfectly with services to the curb.
I think that's a good point, and it is in the package, actually, what you're referencing.
Okay.
Part of that, okay, good.
Thanks. I guess, you know, and I understand this is a complicated issue, and I'm still coming up to speed on it, I guess, you know, I'm trying to tie, what I see here is how we're incentivizing development to kind of what the other problems we see as far as our billion-dollar infrastructure deficit that the city is going to have to face with the next 30 years. I guess I want to make sure that we are not adding to the hole there, and from the, you know, the big differences in the types of development there, I guess, you know, you want to make sure that you are incentivizing exactly the types of growth that you want. Or, the other question is that you should be cost recovery for all the types of development that you have in a more equitable way, and I'm not sure that we're there yet. The results, and I understand that we can't tie in what we've seen in the last few years directly to the incentive, because it's a complicated world out there, but I mean, if we're going by what the results are, I mean, the lion's share of development has come on greenfield, not on the infill side, and then again, going back to the rates that were shown, and what we get from those greenfield developments, it's on the low end there, and I guess I worry that we're still not recovering the costs to adequately maintain and replace that infrastructure in the long term.
I think you're pointing out some very difficult and meaty discussions, as you meant, but I don't know that you can ever reconcile it here, and there is no right or wrong answer, I don't think, so...
If I'm, okay, so, if these questions are too complicated to be answered, I guess, but if we can't, if you can't tell me that we're not causing additional harm in the long term to this deficit, I guess I question why the recommendation is to go forward on the same subsidy as if these questions have not answered. I guess for me, a more prudent thing would either be, take a pause, or to gradually draw it down. The proposal that's before me now, it doesn't add up for me, and I could be wrong, but that's where I'm at.
It's a political decision, and there is no right or wrong, and if you try to go back to your math class and go 2 plus 2 is 4, and there is a right answer, there is not a right answer. There's so much more at stake here between greenfield development, new jobs, construction, lumber industry, it's just, it's way bigger than all of us, and so I don't know if you can ever wrap your head around it.
Okay.
So...
That's, I've said my, yeah, I've said my comments.
I get what you're getting at, but you see, most of the subsidy has gone towards greenfield, but yet it's only 30%, and yet we offered a 90% subsidy, and the infill, as you mentioned, isn't being taken up. So, I don't even know that the subsidy is working on the infill, or working on greenfield. So, we don't know, because of all the market forces, what's actually going on out there going forward, and I don't know that you can predict, and I get that you want to make the right decision, but I don't know that there is one. Okay, but some of the other councillors might have an opinion. Council Turner?
I do have a different opinion.
Okay.
And for me, it's a matter of being competitive. Now, if I'm, I have a choice of building a million-dollar home, and I have a choice between building it in the city, or building it in the county, and first of all, the county's tax rate or their mill rate is already lower than ours in the first place. So, if I move to the county because their off-site levies are lower, and their taxes are lower, the city gets zero revenue from that house for the next 100 years. If I build that house in the city, there's tax revenue from that house for the next 100 years, and for me, that is the issue. Now, whether the subsidy's 30%, 40%, 20%, it's a matter of being competitive, and if you look at off-site levies across the province, some cities don't have an off-site levy assist, however, their off-site levies are lower. So, in theory, they have an assist, they're just not saying it. And it boils down to how many dollars per hectare are we charging for certain nodes in the city, and are we competitive with our outline, whether it be Redcliffe, Cypress County? And that's the issue for me.
Thanks. Council Hirsch?
Well, and I guess, for the sake of the conversation that Council Samraj was indicating in terms of getting his head wrapped around it, I guess it all depends in terms of what you value. Quite frankly, as it presents here, we value the fact that we've got brownfield, that we have existing infrastructure in the ground, we have existing soft services that support those areas. So, that saves the taxpayer a gigantic amount of money, that we've already leveraged the services that we already provide. So, as it stands, we believe and we value the fact that we need and believe in infill as a driver. Having said that, we still have 30% outstanding in terms of new growth, and it was already articulated a little bit, that in some ways, this is kind of a step off as an assist to keep our economy going within Medicine Hat. But I think for the most part, you know, it was already articulated, like, how do we value this, and how do we come up with the numbers? You know, there's already been a suggestion out there, and I think it was the chamber that maybe suggested, that we bring out roads out of the whole conversation, and then we don't have to have an off-site levy, or, sorry... don't have to have an offsite levy, or, sorry, incentive program, because that, for, for all intents and purposes, would almost equate to the same amount. So, you know, I, I look forward to a very fruitful discussion in three years' time. I think the pace that we are right now fits for everyone. We're already getting feedback and comfort from our fellow councillors that feel that this is status codes making a difference. We already heard from a developer and the chamber indicating that, you know, they're okay as well. So I'm very happy in terms of where we're at. I think it's very common sense that what we're doing is kind of holding the line until we have a very fruitful and longstanding discussion when that bylaw comes up for renewal. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turnbull.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just to follow up on councillor Turner, he's absolutely right. That's why we do need to review this bylaw. We have to decide, is our rates that we set up for offsite levies competitive with, with the two Redcliffe and the county, and also competitive by other places in the province? So I think that's, that's very important. And you're absolutely right, councillor Hirsch. As I understand it, if a developer has a big piece of property, he wants to develop housing communities, he has to build the roads and the sewers and the sidewalks within his area, correct? Brown, on the other hand, those roads, those sidewalks, those parks, those, the police protection, it's all the fire protection, it's all there. It's only as we sprawl out are we going to be faced with larger and larger expenses to get police service out there, to get fire service, to get recreational services. And I get it that, that we charge offsite levies to developers to try and pay back some of that cost to the city, since we're taking over the roads and the sewers within that development, and, as well as taxes. So I think it's really, really, I remember being on council back in 2010 when we first did a big change in the land use bylaw. And we spent a lot of time doing it, and I, as I said earlier, nothing is cast in stone. You can't leave something forever. You need to, to say what has changed since we put that in, and we need to make those changes. So, thanks.
Thanks, councillor Samraj.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I know that there's been, we talk about this incentive in a couple of different ways, and I think they're interesting. The incentive as a way of spurring growth in the short term, but I think, you know, the chamber's policy on exempting roads, for example, that, they wouldn't consider that an exemptum, they just consider that road is for a community benefit and should be shared by all. I think that's a good discussion I have, and I actually agree with the chamber that the roads could be taken as a community benefit and should be exempted. But my, I mean, my point is, I think is illustrated well by councillor Turner's argument there, which I hear a lot, is that, well, we should be building those houses in the city, that's, you know, instead of the county because of their lower taxes. That's true, but it's only true if we're recovering what we need to recover in the taxes from those residential developments within the city. Everything that I've heard from staff have indicated to me that single-family residential developments do not cover their, their, their own costs, that they're subsidized by business taxes, which are higher than what they actually receive in services, and multifamily as well. So for me, that is an imbalance that distorts a lot of things, including these kind of discussions that we have here, unless we address kind of the root problem there. I, I guess for me, it's another two years where we're not pulling in the right direction.
Okay. Councillor Dumanowski?
Your worship, I'm going to take a stab at this until my cough allows me to go forward, but anyway. It is, it is a confusing conversation. I, I do appeal with councillor Samraj when, when he's trying to suggest that we need to try and better understand it, and it is, it is a conversation that takes considerable conversation and, and deep understanding to, to get it right. But the mayor said it well, it is largely, there is no right or wrong, and over the years I've been here, I have fought the municipal system many times, and, and over time, I've come to, to better appreciate that there's, there's probably, it's, it's not only a debate that's probably not going to be won by any particular side, but it's one that, that is served well by, by an attitude that, that a government like, a municipal government like ours promotes, and I'll qualify that in a moment. So when you think about greenfield or infill, again, it's been said, infill is, is basically largely established, mature development, there's not a large cost factor to, to, to put in, in services. You're not having to expand any, any other services to, to meet that demand largely. Greenfield is, if you want to call it, we hear the term urban sprawl, it's moving outward. Sometimes involves the construction of, of major roadway systems, bridges, significant investment, and so the cost is there. And so when we try to overlay these municipal cists and we try to pedangle them, if you will, to, to meet what we feel is going to best meet the needs of the development community and, and a growing community, it, you're on one end of the debate or the other, because on one hand, you're incentivizing a group to, to promote urban sprawl, and yet that's new tax base, that's an enhanced tax base, which every community looks forward to, and as has been pointed out, or I'll say, leverage your community altogether. And so you're darn if you do and darn if you don't. On the other hand, we haven't seen a huge uptake in infill, because in some cases, it's not the desired area, or there are other cost factors that are involved, and developers in general are, my, my submission would be is, are looking for a broader clean slate, if you will. So what we have to grapple with and what we have to respond to the community is, what do we feel reflects our values most? And, and one of the debates I think in the future we need to look at is, how do we incent more infill, maybe to the tune of 100%? It's largely at 90 anyway, but, and maybe we, we put a significantly less assist on greenfield so that we reflect what we feel, if that's the case in the future, is the right kind of development. So it is a philosophical debate, is a real debate. In the end, one of the reasons I've come to support and, and will support this tonight is because I've, I've come to understand that a lot of communities have some kind of an assist, but it's a hidden assist. It's, it's already built into their metrics behind the scenes. We just happen to have a very open, overt, transparent process that gives cause to this kind of debate tonight and to a community to, to come to us and say, we like this or we don't. So I think the right and prudent approach is to, to move ahead with the subsidies as they're indicated tonight, but I really do believe it, I will agree. Significant discussions and, and further, and better understandings of what those assists should look like in the future in, in relation to other communities is, is a conversation this community and this council needs to have. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, councillor Friesen.
Well, I couldn't get my button to work, so mostly everything I wanted to say has been stated, but I, I think it's good to hear the kind of questions councillor Samraj has. We've had many discussions about this at this council table, and the thing is, it's not black or white or right or wrong. It's, it's a, it's really a, for me, it's really a concept of finding a way to help a community grow and develop to its benefit. And so I, you know, I haven't always thought it was wonderful either, but the more I learned, the more I thought about it, the more I pondered, the more I talked to developers in the community and so on, I, I realized a couple of things. One, councillor Dumanowski just said it, other municipalities may not show the numbers overtly like we do, but they have assists. They're just hidden in other numbers. It's not like we're that unusual here. But there's two points that are the bottom line for me, and they always have been, and they are, one, if we don't, pardon me, we do not pay a municipal assist if development doesn't happen. That's the first one. The second one is, and councillor Turner spoke to it already, we don't, we don't get any tax revenue on any sustainable basis if there's no development. If we get it, we get tax revenue in perpetuity. That's the difference for me. So you've got a one-time expenditure for a very long-term gain. And to me, especially in times like this, what we can do to support our business economy is, and it's part of our business economy, is absolutely crucial, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, councillor Turner.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to change the subject. I'm going to talk about number three in this report, and it's the initiative we've undertaken. It's called the Business Retention and Expansion Labor Strategy Initiative Budget Amendment. And basically, the City of Medicine has, along with the Medicine College and a couple of private businesses in the city, are undertaking a, I guess, a study to see what we need for added employees to come to the city. I mean, we have one business that's going to be employing 450 people, I know another one that's probably going to be employing about 100, and we want to see whether we have the, the manpower to fill all these job vacancies. And I'm telling you right now, I talked to numerous businesses that are having issues attracting qualified staff. And I think this is a worthwhile strategy when you think about if there's 200 or 300 job openings in the city right now, and we are able to find out how we can attract those workers that come to the city, that's just like bringing in a new industry with 300 people. And really, that's something we have to do, and, and like I said, it's, it's mostly qualified people that they're looking for. Once we find out what we are needing, then we can come up with a strategy and how we can attract those folks to our city, and, and that would be good for some of our housing sales as well, as there, there's quite a few houses for sale right now. So I really support this initiative.
Thank you. Any other questions, or councillor McIntosh?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I have to 100% agree with, with councillor Turner. This initiative moves all the economic development work forward. If, if we spend all this time and money trying to attract business to town, we're seeing fruits to all that labor, and if we're not able to fill those jobs, we are going to put the brakes on incredibly quickly, and that would be a terrible thing at this point. And seeing so many different community groups, businesses involved in this initiative, I think it's going to be, prove to be very successful, so I definitely support it as well.
Thank you, councillor Turnbull.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree as well. We heard today a report that there's such a shortage of welders and pipe fitters for industries in the city that are looking for that. And so to get the college involved, as we did a few years ago, when, when oil and gas was still very hot, we didn't have enough power engineers. So the college threw, I think it was in Kana, Randy Ayersman, and they helped the college establish so that we could produce far more candidates for the jobs that were available. And it's interesting to note that in Europe, they start trades, trades training in high school. They don't wait till a kid graduates from high school. He had grade, in grade nine or 10 can actually learn how to weld, take classes, so that, and that's one of the successes that Germany and some of the European countries have had, is they produce well-trained tradespeople. And I think in, in our country, especially in the city, we sort of got spoiled with the abundance of oil and gas, and, and we might have overlooked those other opportunities. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Samraj.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can we separate these? I, I have no objection to the other ones. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. We can vote on them in, well, we can do number one first, when, when, when we're done. Is there any more questions or comments on this report? So if we could vote on item one first. And that was eight in favor and one against, so that passes. And then item, I don't think there's any controversy on item two and three, if we could vote on those. And that was unanimous. Thank you.
Our next report's item 6.2, page 55. You'll find the Admin and Lead Review Committee from November 23rd. This is just for information.
Move your reception, your worship.
Second.
If we could vote. Councillor. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Again, item 6.3, page 56, Public Services Committee Meeting, November 26th. This is just for information.
If we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next, we move to item 6.4, page 57, the Corporate Services Committee Meeting of November 27th, and this is the tax discount penalty rates for adoption.
I'll move that as indicated.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Item 6.5, page 68, you'll find the Administrative Committee Meeting of November 28th, and this is for adoption and information with the utility budgets for adoption.
I'll move the reports as indicated.
Second.
Okay, so this was the presentation we had earlier, plus an RFP recommendation. Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving along now to reports for reception. Item 7.1, page 206, the Heritage Resources Committee Meeting, November 13th.
I'll move the report for reception.
Comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving along to new bylaws. So we have the, the utilities bylaws here. If council would like, we could do this omnibus just for first reading.
Yes, please.
All right.
Up till 8.5.
Yes. So I'll just read them into the record, and then we can just have one vote on all of them for first reading. Item 8.1, page 210, bylaw 4505, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 2379, the water service bylaw. Item 8.2, page 216, bylaw 4506, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 1541, regulating the use of public and private sewers and drains and the disposal of sewage and the discharge of waters and waste into the Medicine Hat sewer system. Item 8.3, page 217, bylaw 4507, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 1805, the waste bylaw. Item 8.4, page 221, bylaw 4508, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 2244, the electric utility bylaw. Item 8.5, page 265, bylaw 4509, a bylaw for the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 2489, the gas utility bylaw.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
If we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Our next bylaw, 8.6, with unanimous consent, can have all three readings tonight. Page 271, you'll find bylaw 4510, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 3191, the tax penalties bylaw.
Your worship, I seek leave of council to introduce bylaw 4510 and ask that it be given first reading.
Second.
Second.
If we could vote. That was unanimous. Go for a second.
I'd ask that bylaw 4510 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
I'd ask for unanimous consent of council to go to third reading.
Second.
If we could vote. Unanimous consent?
I'd ask that bylaw 4510 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote. That was unanimous.
And our next bylaw can also, with unanimous consent of council, be read all three times tonight. Item 8.7, page 273, bylaw 4511, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 3198, the tax discount bylaw.
I'd ask that bylaw 4511 be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote. Councillor Varga? And that was unanimous. Thank you.
I'd ask that bylaw 4511 be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Seek unanimous consent of council to go to third reading.
Second.
If we could vote. You have consent?
I'd ask that bylaw 4511 be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we're adjourned.